Order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is a special meeting, so as such, we will not change the agenda from what is posted. There are extra agendas, if anybody needs an agenda up on the desk here. And the next item is approval of minutes from the regular June 19, 2019 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Lou.
Second.
Seconded by Ralph. Any changes, errors, commissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. And then we had three special meetings in June, so we'll start with June 25, 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any changes? Errors? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. June 26, 2019. That special meeting, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Ralph. Changes? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. And the last is June 29, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any changes? Errors?
No.
Nope? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Public comment? We'll move on to update on 222-230 and 248 Brownstone Avenue Purchase and Sale Agreement. Our economic development specialist is here, Mary Dickerson. And we'll start with you, Mary.
Okay. So what I want to give you, I know that we have talked, I know that Langton, I know I've sent you guys people on memos, I know you don't always read them, but I send them anyway. And so, we have been working on concept plans. Just so you can kind of get an idea of what would be there, and this is whether the town chooses to move ahead and lease the property, or if the town chooses to move ahead and sell the property. So, what this is, is kind of an outline of where those buildings could fit, and how we could potentially get sort of the best bang for the buck, whether it's something that we do through lease revenue and then personal property tax, or something that we do through sales revenue, selling the property, and then property tax from the developers that come in and build. So if we start on the left-hand side of the page, you'll see that building that's kind of a set kitty corner, that's the existing building there. We've had a lot of interest from breweries in that building. So whether that's something that the town chooses to lease out to them, or whether we sell and another developer comes in and does that, that's sort of the intention there. And then you'll see there's a small covered pavilion, and there's that red sort of trapezoid shape indicates kind of like a public gathering space, which a lot of these breweries like to have. There's parking there, there's an opportunity for parking, and then that large building that has the covered deck would be the restaurant that we've talked about. Next to that, adjacent, is another building. We looked at that for a smaller restaurant, and possibly some retail spaces. Farther up, there's a building that would be public bathrooms, that's closer to the street. And then, the thought was that area that kind of has a loop shape next to the brewery would be a food court area. So that the food truck model that they use, those food trucks could park into those spaces, and allow people to easily access those, and then access the brewery. So on that side, that would be the big parcel that is closest to the one the town owns now. We sort of envision the brewery with the area around that, the public restrooms that would be there, because we envision that boat dock there, and the restaurant. So then if you get to the other two sides, there's another restaurant building, and that's the one that's kind of shaped on an angle that's in the middle of your page. That would have two units, so we could either do two types of food. We could do, say like a burger place along with a dessert, an ice cream shop, or something like that. And then farther down, closer to the public dock, we have talked about having some type of a tourist information center, an interpretive center that brings the history of Portland. That would be there, as well as some small concessions. And so that's why it says space with a museum, public information, and then a parking area. The other thing that if we were to keep it, we would integrate, is to integrate the history of not only the quarries, but our shipbuilding and riverfront. And Willow Island, which is across the way, has quite a unique history, so we would look at putting some interpretive storyboards. Now, this plan also takes into account what had come from tie-in bond, as to where they would be storing soil, and the areas that would remain impervious surface. So I would expect that a developer would come up with similar building locations, probably not similar buildings, depending on what kind of money they want to put into the space. But I think it's very hard conceptually to say, this is what we're going to put here, and how it's all going to fit. So I thought this was a good way to kind of make it fit together, and I think Sue Fiedler did a great job. She did this of her own accord and her own time, and donated this to the town, to kind of give the vision, something for you to visually see, so.
Does everyone know, Sue?
Yep, I do. Jim know?
Yes, no?
Yes.
Landscape architect who works for the State Department of Transportation, and she's been very active in a variety of community activities in town. She does a lot of these schematics, she did a lot of the schematics for some of the other things in town. So, this is very, very nice, Mary.
Thank you. I just, I think it's a good representation to kind of show you what could be, because it's very hard looking at the lot and having the contamination there currently, and not being able to have the access to walk right to the waterfront and see. I think it gives a better overview.
Any questions for Mary on this? Rick?
So, Mary, is it realistic to think that we could support a couple of restaurants and food trucks down there? That's a concern I have. I mean, I like the concept and all, but realistically, at least in the early going, I...
Well, and that's why I say, so if you, if you look at this parcel, you look at the parcel in terms of sections, it's segmented, and so the development would take place. The one building closest to the road is existing, so if we had a tenant to use that, that would bring immediate income. If we chose to sell it, that also raises the sales price, because you have a building for immediate income and return for that buyer. The dock that's there, they're showing a dry dock and a floodplain area, that's something that is going to bring a different kind of investor. So, the opportunity to have an existing permit on the Connecticut River is very attractive, and the fact that we are sort of sheltered, more than some of the areas farther downriver, would make it more attractive. So if you all remember Dock and Dine, Dock and Dine has been trying to rebuild since Hurricane Sandy. And changes in what Army Corps of Engineer requires, and some protected lands in Old Sabre Creek make it very difficult. So a lot of those shoreline restaurants that are facing these issues in lower Connecticut River Valley are interested in things like this. And unfortunately, I can't tell you who I've spoken with, because it's sort of a negotiation process. But there are a lot of interests, and I'm not leaning one way or the other, whether we choose to do this ourselves and lease these parcels, or whether you choose to sell them. I think that's something that you have to work with the finance director, and run the numbers, and see long-term what's going to be the best income production for the town.
Rick still has the floor?
Oh, so another question, and I've been down there, but I'm a little disoriented or confused. Where's the old existing dock right now?
So, the dock that...
It's kind of got fallen down a little bit, but...
Yep. So where you see, where it says fishing access on this, you'll see there's a little like a promontory.
Yeah.
It actually came off of that promontory.
Okay.
And so what they're showing, where it says public dock is really a bulkhead, so that would be fishing from the existing, basically, side of the river.
Yeah.
And it does not show the dock in place, other than there is deep water there, because we would have to decide how we want to replace that, whether we want to replace that as a floating dock, or whether you want to put something that's stable in there.
And it was kind of a pier, wasn't it?
It was a pier connected to a floating bulkhead, but the bulkhead was tied to dolphin pilings. Dolphin pilings are those multiple pieces that are sunk in together. So it was stabilized, but it was floating. So rather than being wood that's connected between the two, it was actually floating.
Okay.
And that was there because for the oil tankers, they could easily raise and lower, and the oil used to go through a tube into those tanks. And so it was a different setup than what you would use for a marine environment.
And then is this dry dock floodplain on the left, lower left, is that down close, or is that still up high there?
It's, it's actually, you can in that area get fairly close to the riverfront. I wouldn't say it's swimmable, but it's definitely an area where you're farther down than you are at the riverfront park now.
Oh, okay.
I did talk to Petsold, and Bob is very interested in this project, very supportive, and would be interested in assisting, should there be the need as we proceed. So, I thought that was encouraging, because certainly knows a lot about docks and boats and the rules and laws, so that was a good thing. Very interested. Ben, I think you saw your hand go up.
Yeah, did something change, where they were originally going to tear down that existing building, and I begged her not to? Did we, are we keeping it?
The changes, there's a lot of interest.
Can we keep the building?
We can keep the building.
Oh, good.
There's been a lot of people approaching us on that building event.
Remember in the beginning, she was going to choose where she was going to have to tear it out?
Right.
She brought up the floor, and I said, "Find a way," and I'm not sure if we found a way, but I hope we found a way.
When there's no interest and there's no money for it, it's, it becomes one of those balancing acts. You have a certain amount of money to do the remediation. If it's not going to bring in income, then to restore it is a big expense with no known income. When it brings in income, then it becomes a more valuable part of the equation, to figure out how...
The other thing is, Ben, we still need, you know, as we proceed, let's say, the purchase is made, you go out for an RFP for this job. So there's no guarantee who and what company is going to do the work. I'm sure, you know, that our...
Tie-in bond will be.
...apply for it, but you, we'd want to look at what proposals are, and work with them, and a committee to determine how we proceed. I know that Economic Development Commission is very interested in being involved with this, and we also have, as I said, Petsold, and then we also have people who are LEPs in town, that would be very interested in being on a committee, which would be the Brownfield Redevelopment Committee. And look at just these kinds of things, as to how we proceed in selection of our approach. So I, it's nowhere in my mind, is it gone, or still there? I mean, that's an open...
Yeah, but as long as, as long as we can make the building environmental clean, and say we don't have enough money to restore it right now, don't tear it down. It's, the foundations of the buildings are, as long as we can get through the environmental with, without having to tear it down.
Yeah.
Good point. Any other questions? This way.
Ask a question.
Lou?
Has Sean Hayes been, I'm not sure who I'm asking this question to, but Sean Hayes been asked about what he thinks might be something that he could do there.
No. And I don't think it's fair to give anybody the upper hand. I mean, we don't own the property, we're in a negotiate, we're in a negotiation phase with the current owner, still, although we have a contract. And we have an agreement with the state for money, but I don't think it's fair any more than it would be fair for me to go to remediation companies that are in town and say, "Would you like a shot at this?" These are people that are coming to me that are interested, and I say, "Well, give me your information on what you'd like to do." And then, we as a community have to objectively decide how we want to...
So he hasn't come to you?
No.
Okay. Very good. But other people have.
Uh-huh.
Okay. What, if I could, what kind of zoning changes are required to have like the food trucks there and some other things?
So the food truck change is actually going to be on your agenda tonight. The food truck isn't ordinance, so it doesn't require any zoning change, and we have a riverfront overlay zone. So everything that is proposed on here is allowed under our current zoning with the riverfront overlay zone. So there's no zoning change requirement, no.
Good question. So additionally, the agreement for the purchase and sale, we do have an extension till September 30 on the same purchase and sale, so I would request that there be a motion and seconded in terms of that extension for the record. Is there a motion to extend the purchase and sale agreement?
I'll make that motion.
September 30, Sharon. Made by Mike, seconded by Jim, I believe.
Sure.
Who was it?
Either one, Ralph, it doesn't matter, as long as it's signed.
I choose Jim.
All right.
Next time, next time. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Any other updates that you had, Mary, on this?
Nothing. I, I mean, just that we have been working on this, and I'm working through some financials based on, when I get interest, then that's a business unit, so I do some research into what they're getting currently for rents for those type of businesses. Because it's awesome, if we go ahead and we move ahead, we have to be able to give you financial numbers that tells you, if we manage it, what we can expect for income. And if we are to lease it, what we could expect to return. And then if we sell the property, the more information that we present about its revenue generating capacity, the higher the price is going to be, because that's all going to be factored into the property at the time.
You know, there was an article in the paper that picked up on some of your information from a memo that we shared at the site visits about only once, one area, and that was parking. I want to get a comment on that a little bit, because that was only a tiny piece...
So this is just proof that no one really reads our memos. I know they're long, so the memo was the memo of June 25th, and...
I read that.
I know, but you gotta read. So on the part, on the top of page two, there's a potential parking revenue calculation, and the sentence reads, "The most common suggestion for this area and for adjacent areas during the time between cleanup and planned commercial development is parking. It was never intended to be a parking lot. There is a very simple and easy way to generate revenue for a short period of time," which would be just what Sean Hayes is doing now. He is leasing the property for parking. Rather than take a flat fee, we ourselves, for an investment of around $15,000, could put up our own parking center and charge revenue based on the car, rather than lease it to somebody. And so that was where that came from. And it has taken off. I've gotten messages on Facebook, I've gotten emails about how I'm just promoting buying this as a giant parking lot. And the memo very clearly stated, it was an idea in the interim to replace any lost tax revenue or personal property tax revenue that we currently receive. Because as we have found with Brainerd Place, sometimes the permitting process can be long. So we could have an agreement either to lease those parcels for development, or we could sell those parcels, and there's not going to be any revenue during that time. If somebody were to put in some kind of a parking lot, even if it was somebody that wasn't us, there's a potential that we could generate revenue from that as well. So it's a revenue generator idea, and it was never intended to be the purpose for the purchase of those parcels.
And then, this is another schematic that we can share.
Uh-huh.
Anything else?
Okay.
I have a couple things that we need to do. First of all, in terms of revenue within our, the land acquisition open space is approximately We also have another account, that's land acquisition, that has approximately $14,000 in it, that can be used for this purchase. And then in addition, you may remember that the town made the required deposit, and the deposit that is already on the li, for the purchase is $19,000. So it looks in a positive sense, in terms of how many dollars are already set aside, and there would be no need for any increase in taxes, anything of that nature. So it's, there's already dollars set aside for the purchase of this land.
Well, I think it's not just that there's no increased taxes, it's making use of a fund that's specifically designated for this type of use. So that's important.
That's true.
Yep.
In addition, I had liked, would like to ask the board if they would take a look at a timetable for a public hearing that's required, and then the vote at the town meeting. And I had an idea that perhaps we could have two public hearings, so that people who can't make one night could come another evening. So I have suggested a, either a Thursday, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday the 22nd of August, Monday the 26th of August, or Tuesday the 27th of August. I wouldn't recommend three, I think two is enough, but I didn't know whether Thursday, Tuesday is better, or what the pleasure of the board is. So I'll open that up for discussion.
I think the 22nd and the 27th is good.
Okay. Thursday, Tuesday?
Enough time, end of one week, beginning of another week.
Two different weeks, two different days. Monday nights are some, there's conflicts with other meetings.
That's true. That's a good point.
Especially at the end of the month.
Good point.
What time, 6:30, 7 o'clock?
Well, I thought, now tonight's special meeting is 7:30. And I think 6:30 is a little early, to be honest with you, when people come home from work. I'd suggest 7:30, simply because it's better for folks that have other activities and work during the day. So I would suggest, and perhaps someone will make the motion, to have two public hearings on the, on the purchase of 222-230 and 248 Brownstone Avenue, for Thursday, August 22 at 7:30 PM, and Tuesday, August 27 at 7:30 PM. I can find another location, if you don't think this room is large enough, or we can have the public hearings here.
I think we do them here.
Make a motion, make a motion to set the public hearing on 222-230, 248 Brownstone Avenue Purchase and Sale Agreement on August 22 at 7:30, and August 27 at 7:30 in the Mary Flur.
I'll second it.
That was seconded by Ralph. Any discussion on that?
Could do.
Okay with that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. And then I have a suggestion for a town meeting, which is when we'll have the vote. And I've checked with Brownstone Intermediate School, and I believe it'll be available for September the 4th, again, at 7:30. Labor Day is September 2, if I'm not mistaken. I'll let everybody check their calendars.
Brownstone Intermediate?
So, we have...
A little more room there, and parking is good there, and visibility.
Just a question, they may, yeah, we should check with them, obviously. That first week of school, usually they don't have an open house, but they probably is a second week, so the first week might be the week.
You're right. I hope so. I didn't think of that.
Hey, Susan, don't we have a Board of Selectmen meeting?
Yeah, well, you could postpone that. You don't have to have a Board of Selectmen meeting that night, you could have the town meeting that night.
Okay.
I just don't want to go too late into September, because the extension is through the 30th, and there's work to be done before you have a closing. Now, if you went to the next week, that would be September 11. I don't really want to have a meeting on September 11, for the obvious reasons.
I think so. It's important, we just, I didn't know...
Not to forget what we do with the Board of Selectmen.
Say that again, Ben?
If you're worried about the school, we have it here.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what we thought.
I don't know how many...
Yeah, I, I would think there might be a big crowd.
Yeah.
Bigger than what we could house here.
I just didn't know if we wanted to look at the middle school, because we really wouldn't want to use the secondary complexes instead of the...
Personally, I think it's difficult for people.
Well, I think, I think if she checks to see if this is available, it's, it has a nice auditorium.
Well, can we vote on it? Place to be determined?
Yeah. Can I make that motion, Ben?
And then we can look, that gives us the flexibility if we have something going on.
Are we doing the vote?
No, it's a town meeting.
Make a motion to set a town meeting.
What, what time?
September 4th, 7:30. Special town meeting? On September 4th at 7:30, place to be determined.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Jim. Discussion on that? If, if for some reason it's not a good date, we can, we can certainly amend that, but I wanted to at least get calendar this, so that people can begin to plan.
And just a reminder, what's the minimum number of people we need to vote, in order to...
Oh, one.
Yeah, so, so in a minute.
I mean, you need a moderator, a secretary, and you need somebody to give a motion.
Okay.
So, there is no minimum.
Okay. Would this be where we hand out the little pieces of paper, and...
Yeah.
Just like we've done...
Just like we've done.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Checklist and valid. Okay, ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. I think that's all I had, unless there were any questions on that. We just needed to set those public hearings and the special town meeting. Are there any appointments to boards and commissions? I have none. If not, we'll move on to Portland Housing Needs Assessment Discussion, and a member of our diversity group, as well as myself, Caroline Murray is here. And I want to just do a little introduction before Mary Dickerson gets up, share some information for us on this topic. Are there any other diversity group members here, Caroline? Just the two of us so far? Okay. The diversity group is a group of folks, some from Port, mostly from Port, oh, Janet has arrived, she's a member, too. Hi, Janet. And it's a group that gathered, really after a session that was held here in the library, that talked about... Thank you. Implicit bias. I have a hard time remembering now, too. I was going to say inhibiting, but implicit bias. And it's, it's issues surrounding diversity, in terms of people's ethnic, racial backgrounds, income, way of thinking, religion, all different ways, gender, sexuality, a lot of different items and matters associated with understanding one another, and making sure that we work together as a cohesive human. And the meeting that we had was something that Harriet Beecher Stowe House brought a speaker, and there was someone within our community that paid for that speaker to come. And it was well-attended, I think there was about 25, 30 people there. And after that, Caroline Murray in particular, I think, wanted to say, along with some other folks at the meeting, "Why don't we continue? Don't end there, but continue some of these dialogues." So, some of those dialogues have continued. There were some meetings in June, and then May and June, May and June. And there'll be a meeting this Friday, actually, at Caroline's house. Planning meeting. And we are also, sort of going along with this, the town of Portland is working on becoming a sustainable Connecticut town, and I've talked about that before. And some of that work, Lou is involved with that, with me, and there's some other folks within our staff, and Frank Keo has helped with that as well. And what we're doing is looking at nine to 10 different aspects of sustainability. And one of them is this concept of equity and diversity. So while it's not something that Caroline and the members of the diversity group knew about ahead of time, it just sort of fits in with what the Sustainable CT is, is trying to promote. And one of the things that they have asked the towns to do is, in light of the need for thinking broadly about the needs of a community, pick one of the other eight items. Actually, there's nine other items, but we won't get into that detail. And the item that seems very pertinent is housing. Portland has talked about this in the past, in fact, back in 2011, there was an affordable housing study done, I think Ben might remember that, because he and I attended those meetings. It was a book that they produced that talked about the considerations of zoning, and the considerations associated with some of the laws that promote affordable housing for people. And by that we mean workforce housing, housing that police officers, firefighters, teachers, people that start out at a modest salary can afford. And I think as you look at some of the statistics that Mary's going to discuss, and that I've handed out to the group, it is not cheap. It is a bit of an investment to move into our community, because most of our housing is single-family tours. We do have some apartments, and those are opportunities for people. We do have some affordable housing, about 8.24% of our housing stock is considered by definition affordable. 10% is the threshold at which a developer cannot come in and disregard zoning and build affordable or low-income housing. And when we... And when we were talking about some of the aspects of the redevelopment of Elmcrest, also known as Brainerd Place, we talked about the fact that then that Board of Selectmen, which was previous to this, might be a goal for the town to contemplate getting to ten percent, because then you're not subject to a developer coming in and changing your landscape without regard to zoning. So if your zoning laws are well-established, and you're able to, say, follow the rules, it's a lot better than when someone might come in. You may, you may read about, the Simsbury had something recently, where a developer came in and they were going to not follow any of the zoning laws, and over, I consider, overbuilding, and really perhaps not following the wishes of trying to keep that as a semi-royal town in Simsbury. I don't want to get into too much of that, I just wanted to give you a little bit of an introduction as to why we're doing this tonight. And I was going to take some notes at the board, as Mary talks and you discuss, because our consultant that's working with us on Sustainable CT said, it'll help you as a community to look at these things going forward, if you write them down and think about them as you discuss. With that, we'll start with Mary.
Okay, so I've given you guys another memo. I tried to make it as simple as I can, and what it really is, is the state of residential housing in Portland. So it's dated July twenty-fourth on the top. How I started is I went through all of our transfer records in the clerk's office. And we transferred eighty-seven properties since January first that are residential. One of them was a seasonal residence out on the lake, so I didn't count it in my calculations, because it's not allowed to be a year-round home. So when you look at those numbers, I broke them down. Seventy-two of those homes were single-family homes. Nine were condominium units, and five were multifamilies. All five of those were two-unit homes. The mean sales price, meaning the average, was two-fifty-one, two-thirty-two. The median, that's the direct middle, was two-fifty. The number appearing the most, the mode, was three-hundred thousand. The lowest price was sixty, that was an estate home in need of a lot of repair, and so that skewed our average a little bit. And the highest-priced home was four-seventy. So when you look, that the average sales price was two-fifty-one, but the price appearing the most was three-hundred, our houses tend to run in that two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-thousand-dollar range. So when you go again to the mean, the, you know, average, there was forty-four less than that, and forty-two more than that. We had nine homes that were deed-restricted, and while you think of deed-restricted as affecting value, it wasn't even split. So five homes were below the number, and five homes were above that average. One of those was a Habitat home, and that Habitat home actually sold for two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand. So a lot of people think the Habitat homes are coming in, you know, in the hundred-and-twenty, hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar range. That is not correct. They convey at what the market value would be, and then Habitat works with the buyer to be sure that the mortgage is affordable. And that's done so it doesn't drag down the property values in the neighborhood. So even putting in a house that they're assisting that buyer with incentives and ways for them to be able to afford their monthly mortgage payment, it's not, does not have a negative impact on property values. So then if you go down to the next section, I talk about the rental market. I have been watching the rents. We have four properties that are listed for rent. That doesn't mean that some of our private, our owners of private rental properties aren't putting signs up in their windows, but these are rentals that are publicly available, that somebody looking for rent could search on the internet or call a real estate agent and find. There are four. Two of those are one-bedroom, one-bath units in multifamily houses. One is renting at eight-hundred dollars a month, the other at eight-fifty. And two are single-family, three-bedroom, one bath, and one-and-a-half-bath homes, and they're priced at fourteen-hundred and fourteen-fifty. That's all we have. So we're a town of roughly ninety-five-hundred people, and right now we have four rentals available. It's a, it's a very tight market. So if you flip that over, I talk about affordability. So I use two sources for data, one is CERC, the Connecticut Economic Resource Center, up in Rocky Hill. They produce data profiles for all of the towns in the state of Connecticut, and they use census data, and they use other banking data and information, they get to put those together. And the other is CoStar. CoStar is a national data collection service agency that provides information to real estate agents. So they have a little more insight into income, which, as a community, we, we generate a lot of numbers, we don't really know what people make. So this is important data to look at. So a lot of times what you'll see for a town is our median household income, and our median household income is eighty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. And that's really not reflective of our community. So what I did through CoStar is you can take data from different points in town. So on the same street, if you go to Marlborough Street at the intersection of High Street, within a one-mile radius, the average, the median income is fifty-seven thousand, four-ninety-nine. And if you take that same road and you go out to Portland-Cobalt Road at Payne Boulevard, the median income within a one-mile radius is a hundred-and-twenty thousand, seven-sixty-two, in a matter of driving about a mile and an eighth.
Would that encompass Middletown also?
It does not.
You kept it within the border?
It, it kept it here, so it kept, it kept it on the Riverside.
Thank you.
Yep. And thank you for clarifying that. So there's some ratios that are used to kind of guide, not only lenders, but guide landlords as to what you should be looking for for income ratios. So HUD has a renters index standard, which says that rent should be no more than thirty percent of somebody's gross income. And then there's ratios that are used by banks. So the top ratio is at twenty-eight percent, so a buyer's mortgage, total mortgage payment, which is taxes, their mortgage, and any kind of insurance, homeowner's insurance or PMI they're required to carry, should be twenty-eight percent. And the bottom ratio includes a little more debt, so it includes revolving or continual payments, so things like student loans, car payments. Now, car loans are no longer three years, a lot of people are going to seven-year and seven-and-a-half-year car loans. So it takes that into consideration, and it says, your mortgage payment, including all the other fees and other debt, should be no more than thirty-two percent of your total income. So what I did was I took an average home for Portland that fit pretty close to exactly where our, our middle is. Twenty Maple Roads sold on April twenty-second. It's a three-bedroom, I believe it was a two-bath, raised ranch, two-car garage, sold for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, which is right in that sweet spot for Portland. Their assessed value, which is seventy percent of their appraisal, is one-eighty-five, nine-ninety. Their property taxes are sixty-two, eighty-eight, thirty-two per year. And we assume a four-percent fixed-rate loan, I didn't assume points, so that we can keep the closing costs kind of low. And so I have case one and case two. And the reason I did that is, it is very hard for our young families to save for the kind of deposits that are required. So a twenty-percent deposit is required to not have to carry private mortgage insurance. On a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, that's fifty-thousand dollars. And that has become very difficult for families with student loan debt, with car loans, with healthcare costs increasing. And then case two shows you, if they did not have that down payment, they would have to add that PMI in there, and it's a significant increase. So in the first case, if they had the fifty-thousand dollars to put down on a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, their base mortgage and interest would be nine-eighty-one, their property taxes are five-twenty-four, and their insurance, homeowner's insurance, would be ninety-two, seventy-five a month. If they didn't have that down payment, those numbers stay the same, but it adds in a hundred-and-eighty-seven, fifty a month for private mortgage insurance. So those totals that you see, the average monthly payment of fifteen, ninety-seven versus nineteen-oh-five, are what our residents have to cover each month. When you go down to the bottom, I took our median household income for the town as a whole, and then our median household income within one mile of those two points on the same roadway. And you will see, using the top ratio of twenty-eight percent, our median household income can afford either. They're right on the line for requiring PMI. Our median household income at the Marlborough and High Street intersection cannot. And our median household income earner at the Portland-Cobalt Road and Payne Boulevard are okay. Using the bottom ratio, the total that they can expend is, is high enough for everyone but that income earner at the Marlborough and High Street location to afford the median home. And then when you get to the HUD index, that thirty percent, you can see that it, it gets a little closer. So we're on the line, and that's what kind of scares me a little, is we've become a town that's being sought out. And I have phone calls every day, I had a call from a couple today from Southington that are moving here. They love our community, they want to be part of the community, they're very excited about our Blue Ribbon Schools, they're excited about the parks. They came here because they came to a riverfront concert a few years ago, and fell in love with just the energy of the people of the town. But at the same point, I'm very concerned that we are pushing out long-term citizens, generational Portland families, who are not able to grow up in this town and be able to afford a house in this town. So just looking at this chart, you can see that, that middle column, where your median income in that Marlborough Street and High Street area, fifty-seven thousand, four-ninety-nine, is much more than the starting salary that many jobs pay. Firemen, policemen, teachers, our own professional jobs here in Portland don't start at that salary. So we are pricing out a lot of our own-town employees, our own Board of Education employees. So, you know, the, the question is, what can we do? Well, we really, there's not a lot we can do to market forces, because we are a great community, and people want to be here. What we can do are some things that are really looking at tailoring some housing programs to look at market conditions, working with banks, helping our residents, and those that want to become residents, to be more financially literate, to understand what they're getting into with a mortgage, and to really work with some of these groups that are out there that help you look at housing. I think the Habitat House was a great opportunity for us. Two of them, you're right. And we have a lot of properties that come up for tax auction. I would love to see if we can start working with Habitat for Humanity and be able to take those houses and renovate those, together with them, for families in need. What happens most often is they go to flippers, because they generally require cash, or they can't secure a mortgage immediately with the time that's needed. If we can find an agency to work with, we can really bring more families into town that are kind of being priced out. And these are not people that are on public assistance. I have so many people say, well, we don't want to, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about making sure that people that live here can stay here. And so people get into a rent, and it's very hard to find another rent and move up. So we have a lot of families with two children and a two-bedroom apartment, because they can't find a three-bedroom. We have two houses right now on the market that are three-bedroom homes. So we really need to start looking at how we provide access to people from outside the community coming in, but also people in our own community, and allow them to be able to stay here. And there's a lot of programs that we can work with, both in the county and the state level, to start providing the education and the information we need to make sure that everybody in our community that wants to be here can stay here. Ben?
I just want to point out, before you speak, Ben, there's additional information and data that I'm not going to go over tonight, but maybe at another time we could. One is some, of, an analysis worksheet that we worked on. There's some questions that Sustainable CT had asked us to complete. You can read that at a later time. And then some statistics, Mary pointed out that a lot of her information is from CERC, which is Connecticut Economic Resource Center, quasi-public. And also, the Partnership for Strong Communities, which is another organization in Hartford that collects data on housing. So while Mary has taken some of the data and, and applied it to Portland, these documents give you the, the raw data that you can review and analyze. And there's an additional handout that I gave to you, and it's something that our Council of Governments helped me with. One of the interns that's working there this summer helped us with an analysis of the basic demographics that Portland has. We're basically a growing, older community, and we are growing more wealthy, and we are probably not growing very diverse right now. So when you look at the statistics, and we compare ourselves to the rest of Connecticut, while we have that eight-point-two-four percent affordability index for the government definition, some of the towns in Middlesex County are, Akiliangworth is point-nine-sixth in terms of affordable housing that they have available. Some of the other towns in Middlesex County vary between two, and maybe, I think, I think Westbrook was around five percent. So as a county, what Mary is pointing out, we're similar. As you look a little broader, while Glastonbury is a statistically richer community, it has a little more diversity in its housing, and it has a little more in terms of, it's still growing older, but it, it is also not as fast-growing older. Middletown is growing a little younger. I believe they're one of the towns that's predicted to have an increase in their school population. The other towns in Middlesex County are trending toward less children within the community. And some of the statistics that you see here, you can see Portland, and then if you go on that partnership data base that they provide to you, you can look at Cromwell, you can look at East Hampton, Marlborough, East Hartford, at any town, they'll, they'll show you. But in general, you know, some of the things that I'd like to talk about in a few minutes is, how do we like this? Are there things that we want to work on or change? So I'll open it up, and Ben, you're first, and I'm going to just take some notes.
How many vacant houses do we have in Portland?
Um-
What'd you say, Ben?
Vacant houses?
Yeah, I saw that statistic.
Yeah.
That's in the partnership information.
Was it like, did I see like four-hundred, I can't find four-hundred.
Yeah, we have-
I don't know what that, I don't know if they're counting Elmcrest Hospital as though they have fifty beds.
What's the, I thought it said houses, what does it say?
They help us there?
Well, it's referring to, every other one is referring to homes, not businesses. And it talks about owner occupied, it talks about rented, occupied, and then it talks about vacant.
Yeah, four-hundred and one.
Where are the four-hundred and one?
We, we have a number of homes around Great Hill Lake and Jove's Pond that are considered seasonal. And although they're on our rolls as homes, they are not residences. So they get considered as vacant, because although by state purposes they are a home, they are not a residence, if you understand the difference. So we cannot allow someone to take up residence there, because they don't meet minimum habitability standards. They don't have potable water, they don't have central heating. A lot of them don't have compliant septic systems, so that's part of it. Homes that are listed for sale, a lot of times they'll take that number and they add that in. And then they'll take available rental properties, and they will add that in as being empty. So even though a house may be on the market, and I think today I counted fifty-four single families, they sometimes add those numbers in as, because they're available, as being vacant, and they're not. But we do have a sizable number of houses that are considered to be seasonal.
Could we switch that down? I'm just curious, if we have all these vacant homes, we should be figuring out.
Yeah, unfortunately, they're not, it's, it's kind of a misrepresentation, because they aren't actually livable. And then a lot of them are not vacant, they're just a listing of, they, they scroll the same data I do, and they total numbers at a point in time. And so they, they may come up with fifteen rentals available, and ninety-six houses for sale, and they're going to give you a total of a hundred-and-twenty-one vacancies, and then they have seasonal.
How do you count, say, like a seasonal resident, maybe a snowbird, that technically now is domiciled in Florida?
They do not count as a resident, because they are not, they are not a voter here, they don't register their car here, and they don't pay income tax from that address.
Right, so now is their house-
So their house is normally considered a, it's a, there's no resident in that house, and because it's not rented, then they're not getting a tax return or a voter registration pinging back to them from somebody living in it. So, I mean, this is, when Susan says we're becoming a wealthier community, we have a lot of families in town that own multiple homes. And so depending on when they retire, a lot of families now are going to New Hampshire, or they're going to Delaware, they're going to Florida, Arizona. And they spend a hundred-and-eighty-one days there, a hundred-and-eighty-three, whatever they need to do to make it legal. So they own a home here, but it does not, for state purposes, have a registered person there. There's nobody paying taxes, there's nobody registering a vehicle, no one registering to vote, so for them, it's empty. So another thing that I, I get a little nervous about, because I get a lot of calls, I'm not a real estate agent, but I get a lot of calls from people on the residential end. And there's an expectation that there's going to be a cut in the interest rate at the end of the summer by the Fed. So they expect a twenty-five basis point cut, which is going to reduce the interest rate. And there's an inverse relationship between interest rate and housing prices. So when that interest rate drops, the housing price goes up- So, when that interest rate drops, the housing price goes up. And while you would think that the drop in the interest rate lowers your monthly mortgage payment, when people are trying to qualify for a mortgage, that just increases the amount of money they need down. So, the mortgage payment is inconsequential, and that PMI requirement, if that kicks in, offsets what they're saving with the drop in the interest rate, and it actually makes the houses more expensive. So, every time we see that interest rate drop and we see those housing prices increase, you see more people getting pushed out of the market. And these are working people trying to establish roots in our town who want to raise their children here and be a part of the community, and they're having a hard time. The positive thing is having so many older homeowners who are past retirement age and getting to the point where they're looking at downsizing or selling their homes, is there's a lot of deferred maintenance, and that lowers the housing price. So, that provides a better option for market entry for a lot of our younger families.
Do we have any builders or contractors that are interested in building homes that are less expensive than our median cost?
We don't really have the land, and Ben can probably speak to this. So, where it would be most affordable and efficient is going to be downtown where you have sewer and water. And where we have larger tracts of available land is where there is no sewer and water. And so, to put in the type of septic system and wells that would be required for a large-scale housing development becomes difficult. I will tell you, the Copper Beach properties have held their value, but they're a good value. So, those, the condos on Summer Street, the houses that are part of Grandview Farms, those apartments that are in the first building there at the atrium, those turn over, they're very affordable, they're running it right around a hundred thousand, and so for our seniors looking to downsize, they're a great option. There's normally one or two for sale at any point in time. There was recently one for rent because they have a cap on the number that they can rent. I think it's only five percent. So, people are always looking to rent one there. So, those age and deed-restricted properties have been very good in holding their value, but those values have stayed at a level where it's affordable for people to get in and to stay and be part of the community.
I invited members of the diversity group. I don't know if you've had any comments on this issue. Caroline, Adam.
How's the aspect? Wow, I'm learning. Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Jan?
Obviously, you wouldn't have as much diversity if it's tighter for people to enter into the housing market. I mean, we can attract new people, but we're not going to get, you know, different race or whatever makeup if we haven't got people coming from outside. So, it's very limited. I think that's kind of a lock in some ways.
One of the ways that we've achieved diversity in our two gatherings so far is to purposely call ourselves a diversity group rather than Portland's diversity group or a diversity of Portland. So, our membership includes people from Middletown, from Duro, and from Glastonbury. We are not just Portland, and that's how we've been able to have events where people can meet other folks double up.
Well, and I think that's another good way, too, to exchange ideas, because it's, you come up with something and you're trying to reinvent the wheel, and there's people out there that have already done it that can help you, and it's not as hard as you think. I think one of the issues that we really need to look at is rental housing. The fact that there's only four units available right now, and I know that there's a lot of people that will have a unit available, and they'll send it out in a private message on their friends and Facebook and say, "I've got an apartment opening off August first, if you know of anybody." They get snapped up. The real estate agents I talked to said seven days, and most of that seven days is because people see the apartment the first day, they go out to see it, they put in their papers for their credit check, and it takes that long for the credit check to come back. And a lot of our landlords are running through agencies now where they use a credit check. And that's where that seven-day lag comes in. If people could just hand somebody fifty or a hundred dollars to hold that apartment till they get their paperwork done, they would do it. And there's constantly things on, you've seen the Portland-Connecticut Community page, there's always people on a Facebook page saying, "Can you help me find an apartment? Do you know of a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom in Portland?" So, there's a lot of people wanting to be in our community, there's a lot of people wanting to stay in our community that are having a hard time finding housing.
Mary, do you think the Brainerd Place is going to reasonably help this?
I think it's going to do two things. I am getting two kinds of phone calls. So, I keep a list, and that list, whenever someone calls me and say, "I want to keep up with what's happening with the apartments at Brainerd Place," that list then goes to the leasing agent for BRT Demarco. I don't do anything with it but compile it, and I'm getting two very distinct groups. Well, I'll say three people calling. I get a lot of seniors who want to downsize. They love living here, they are not ready to go to assisted living, they're sick of mow on the lawn, and they are sick of shovel and snow. And the idea of indoor parking in an elevator building with a balcony and be able to turn the key and go to Florida for six weeks is really appealing to them. Those people are all homeowners in Portland, so those houses are going to go on the market, which is going to help give people more options to purchase. I have a lot of parents of twenty and early thirty-somethings that are calling saying, "I would love Johnny to come home, but there's nowhere for them to rent. When are these apartments coming?" And then, I have a lot of young professionals and employers from Middletown who are calling and saying, "When are your apartments available? Because we're hiring twenty-six computer technicians, and they don't have any place to go. We're hiring four engineers, and they can't find housing." If you really want a fun exercise, Google what's available for rental apartments in Middletown. And you're paying twelve-hundred dollars a month to live over a building on Main Street by the bicycle shop. So, our apartments, although their Brainerd Place's price point is a little more expensive, they've got guaranteed indoor parking, and they've got a fitness center, they've got a pool, they've got walkability to shops and restaurants. We're a very safe community. You've got the opportunity to go out the entrance and down Pickering Street and use the Riverfront Park and run in the morning and run at night. We have a different lifestyle than you have if you live right off of Main Street, Middletown. So, those are the three I'm getting, are the parents that want their adult children to come home, and the kids have been looking, but there's no apartments. The employers that are looking to offer a good housing opportunity when they make that offer of employment to a young professional, and then the adults that are in that, I'll say mid-to-late fifties to the late sixties range, who want to get out from under the expense and the maintenance of a house, but stay in town.
So, I think, you know, I've always been a big proponent of the apartments because it is going to fill the niches you're talking about. But ironically, what it does is it hurts our ratio for affordability.
So, we have identified, Mary Pont is working on, we can provide rental assistance, and we can work with tenants to get rental assistance. And a lot of our renters in town qualify for rental assistance because our rents are so high, and they don't come forward. So, what Mary did was took the list from last year and then used income to identify people that would be qualified and reach out to them. So, I think there was a hundred-and-eight that we deemed could be qualified, and sixty so far have filled out rental assistance applications. If those are approved, those sixty people receiving rental assistance add to our numbers of affordable housing. So, it is people that are in our public housing projects, people that are receiving Section Eight assistance, and then people that receive rental assistance, people with FHA mortgages. So, we could really start doing more, and when I say financial education, one of those is FHA. FHA mortgages count as affordable housing. So, there's other ways of affordable housing besides people just think low income. We have two low-income housing developments in town. There is a waiting list for both, I was told. So, those are full, and people are still waiting to get in. And then, we really, we really have a shortage for those young working professionals and single working parents who are earning between that fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars a year, which sounds like a lot of money, until you try to find a rent, and you pay your electric bill and your heating bill and your cable TV and your car and your health insurance premium, and there's nothing left at the end of the month.
You think it's still hot, Ben?
The ink got heavy.
It's all writing.
So, this is sort of an introduction. We can continue this another night, but I think it's worthy of us talking about because it certainly has an effect on our local economy, has an effect on the livability of those who are here, and also, I think, the need that, I think Mary's pointed this out and some others, that we need to attract different groups of people, whether they're young, they're of a different ethnic or racial background, or they're of another interest, as well as have attractive housing that attracts people that are coming in for jobs. So, I will tell you that Standard Knapp recently sold. Standard Knapp is a well-known manufacturer in our town, and they were very happy that it sold. They sold their manufacturing facility to a company in Germany. So, I went down today to meet the new owner, and he explained that in Germany, this company, and I'll get the name of it, I didn't remember the name of it, has about a hundred-and-seventy-five employees in Germany. In Portland, Standard Knapp has between fifty-five and fifty-eight employees. So, now, they're a bigger company, they're both packaging design and packaging machine-making. It's fascinating to see some of the packaging that they make down there for some very well-known products. And so, they're looking to bring some of the folks that worked in Germany into Connecticut, and they're also talking about potentially expansion of their operation, because I think they'll be able to corner the market better by merging themselves together. So, I encouraged them to come in and talk with us and to know a little bit more about our town. They were very interested in the Brainerd Place and being a place where, in fact, one of them said, "Well, maybe we could buy one of those apartments, and when people come over from Germany, or we could rent one, not necessarily for sale, then they'd have a place for them to stay." Because right now, he's staying at the inn in Middletown instead of in a place in Portland. And I know Mary reports that all the time. While people are coming to Portland, maybe to go to St. Clement's for a wedding or for a conference, or they're going to Brownstone Exploration Discovery Park, and they live in New Jersey or Delaware, and they're coming up here and they want to visit friends, they don't stay here because there is no place to stay. They go out of the town. But back to this manufacturer, they would have the wherewithal to probably rent a couple of apartments and then have those available for people who would be coming here. He was also very interested in the fact that we're looking to attract younger people and that we have good relationships with Vital Tech and with Middlesex Community College, as well as Wesleyan and other educational institutions, because they need to have manufacturing skilled people to work in that factory and in that ability to have the mindset to make packaging with machines. So, it was a fascinating discussion. It's certainly important that we become more attractive to those kinds of industries that we want to attract, as well as have the wherewithal here, whether it's the right kind of housing, or whether it's apartments, or even maybe some short-term stay. We only have one modest motel, and, you know, those are all the things that we've always talked about. So, I think as you read through this material, we've probably come up with some other ideas. We'll put it on the agenda for another time, but I think it's a good way to plan, and I'd like to, at some point, have Planning and Zoning take a look at some of this, and maybe some of our other groups in town take it up. I'm going to bring it to the diversity group meeting. I'd like to bring it to the Senior Senator Advisory Committee meeting, and as you converse on it, please feel free to ask if you need more copies of that data, I might get available to you. Any other questions or comments?
I think the only thing, with all the things going on in town, I think it's a perfect time to be talking about this, because there's so many different moving parts right now. So, lots of time.
Lots of time. A lot of opportunity, I think, Mike, right there.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Mary. But Mary's not leaving.
She got her up there again.
We're optimizing your time tonight, aren't we?
You're getting three cracks in the batter's box.
The next item we're going to talk about is our ordinance and food trucks. And Mary has prepared a memorandum, which I believe is in your packets, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right, Mary?
Yep.
And we have two people in our audience that are interested, and if there's comments you want to make at some point, feel free.
So, in the fall of last year, in October, I sent a memo to Planning and Zoning requesting them to add brewery uses to our planning and zoning regulations. So, very briefly, a brewery is an industrial manufacturer, regardless of how small they are and how fancy their equipment looks, and a pub is a restaurant use. And so, unfortunately, the way our zoning regs are written, those two uses together are incompatible. So, our industrial regulations do not allow for restaurant use, and our commercial regulations do not allow for manufacturing. So, many towns had already done this. They revised their regulations to allow existing restaurants and taverns and pubs to have brewery operations, and they revised their industrial regulations that allowed for brewers to offer beer tastings and beers, and in some case, food within an industrial zone. So, they did not take action on that. Economic Development sent them another memo, and they finally came forward and took the language from that memo and created a text amendment, which will be, I think the public hearing is August first. They will have a public hearing on allowing, and it's really just simple text changes to our regulations that will allow a place like Bud's, should they want to, or a Portland restaurant, to brew their own and sell their own beer. They would be allowed to manufacture there. And would allow a building in our industrial zone to be used as a brewery and manufacture beer, but at the same time, allow them to have customers come in and sample the products there. That being said, the brewery model utilizes food trucks, and it's kind of a simple reason. They are not in the restaurant business, but people that are coming to drink beer want food with that. The benefit of having a food truck is you can change your selection of food, whether it's seasonally or the type of beer you're brewing, or if it's just you know the type of crowd you get on a Sunday versus the type of crowd on Saturday. The problem with food trucks in Portland is our ordinance has always been interpreted that we do not allow them. And it goes back to when Standard Knapp and the other industrial companies used to have the roving food trucks. And they would come, and people would go up to the food truck, and they would get their food, and they would toss their garbage, or the food truck would release their grease traps wherever they were parked, and off they would go. And the people that were hurt the most were brick-and-mortar restaurant businesses. So, the old Speed's Diner and the old Coffee Pot were losing those sales because the food truck was coming in just at the busy time, and then they were leaving again. So, this opportunity really is here with the breweries for them to kind of eliminate that risk to our existing restaurants, because they, in fact, act as a sponsor. They provide for all of the problems created by food trucks. So, by sponsoring that food truck, they have to provide the bathrooms. So, our restaurants are required to provide facilities, the breweries would provide those facilities. They would provide trash pickup, they would provide parking, and they would basically be the responsible party for the food truck that came. And just as we have always allowed residents to have a special event and bring a food truck in for a party, that's essentially what these brewers are doing, is they're having that food truck there just for their opening hours. It would not, allowing food trucks to come in would not allow them to say, "Come and park at the police station for the morning and take business away from the Lillies." It would specifically be, just as if our brewers were opening a restaurant with a kitchen within their facility, only they don't have the expense of the kitchen, they just have the food truck come. So, I did some research, both with other towns here and within New England, as to how they handle them. A lot of the bigger cities like Boston have food trucks that, we'll say, rove. They go around, they park in different areas, and the city permits them. I'm not proposing anything like that. I'm proposing that an existing business can sponsor a food truck on their site, and so that food truck is part of their business operation and part of their business plan. And then, that eliminates, as the memo talks about, the issues that are there, which is having the customer amenities, having the seating, having the bathrooms, having safe parking, knowing how people are going to cross to get their food and go back to their vehicles or to the business, trash pickup. And our brewers or the people that sponsor these trucks are going to be policing that because they don't want grease in their driveways, they don't want trash, they don't want any kind of the problem. kind of the problem that comes when they just kind of zip in for the busy hour and zip out. So, are there any questions at all?
Is it going to be one truck?
That's up to the ordinance, and that's up to you guys, as to how you want to word the ordinance. So we don't have any zoning regulation for food trucks?
I mean, what's the feel you're getting from the two?
I mean, I think with a site plan approval based on the size of a property, I think they could support two. And I say that because it allows you to offer a choice of food, or it allows you to offer both a meal truck and like a dessert truck.
Well said, but if they said either, I'm just curious, the two people you dealt with.
We have not had discussions about multiples.
I'd want to know that, I think it would be an important thing to know. And I, you know, if they need two, or three, or one, or, you know, I'd want to know that.
In your packets, there is a memorandum that had been sent to the Economic Development Commission by Mary on this topic. We also put in your packets the actual ordinance from Chapter 11 on licenses and business regulations that's in existence now. And then Michelle did some research for us, and came up with some samples. She came up with a draft for you to review, and we'll talk about again, on licenses and business regulation. And then she gave us a copy of the Town of Madison's Mobile Food Service Establishments and Mobile Food Vendors. So I'd ask that you take a look at these, and we'll put it on the agenda again, and review this, and see if we've been ready to proceed with an ordinance that would meet your needs.
I didn't read the whole thing, but just the first line.
Which one, Ben, the one that Michelle put together, the draft?
No, sorry, I'm back on our regs.
The current one?
On Chapter 11.
Yes.
I read that as we can have it.
Okay, let's take a look at it.
So I was going to ask Mary, what is, what classification does Top Dog come on your?
State property.
It's state property, and they were grandfathered in that location.
By us, or by the state?
I believe both. They predated our, on the bottom of that, Chapter 11, Ben, is there a date that that was instituted?
No, this was a draft, December 24, 19.
Well, the Chapter 11, you know, when Mary and I looked at this initially, we thought then that maybe there isn't a need for a change.
My feeling was that because we have always interpreted the regulation that if it's a private event, you do not need to have, they technically are not a food truck, they are part of the private event. We've had food truck festivals at the fairgrounds, people have them for showers, for private parties, they come to the fair, that if they're on the property of the brewery, then the brewery is taking responsibility, as anybody would for a special event, is how I interpreted that.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I believe our zoning would have to show the truck on it, for example.
On the special permit and the site plan.
Yeah, so I do believe, but the way I read this, I don't think we have to change our rules, this says in the right of way.
Which page are you looking at, Ben? Front page?
Right, the first, yeah, when it introduces it, 11-80. That's not how I read this.
11 dash, no, 11-80, we don't, that's, that's not in existence. What's in existence is 11-1.
Over there? What's the language we're having?
Michelle worked on 11-80.
Okay.
Where's 11 dash?
It looks like this.
Oh.
This is existing.
Yes.
This is.
So, Mary, when Top Dog came in or got their license, like, did we basically not really have a regulation?
There was not a regulation. And if you, if you think back to, you know, the 60s and the 70s, the food trucks came to job sites and to factories, the whistle blew for the 15-minute break, and they would be there, and they would stay for that time, and when that was done, they would leave. And so they were kind of an in-and-out thing. Now, it's very different. It's not the egg and coffee wagon that it used to be. They are very specialized, and in some cases gourmet food, and they really are in competition with our restaurants. And so that's why, you know, I'm treading very carefully that we don't want to go back to the days where, and I use Main Street as the example, we have two very successful breakfast and lunch places in Sarah's and Malili's. We don't want them to be able to park in front of the vacant TD Bank from 11 to 2, and take away prime customers from two businesses that have worked very hard to be a good part of our community.
I will tell you though, Rick, when you mention Top Dog, Andrea Spalding comes in every year, and she gets a permit from my office, that she pays a very modest fee, and that's her permit to exist on that site. She has a lease with the state of Connecticut, so, from what Mary's saying, that the state of Connecticut, quote-unquote, invites her to be there, because they have a lease arrangement with her. And then as far as the vending piece from Chapter 11, Michelle writes up the permit, she pays for it, and she comes in once a year, and she has it. We do have, and I've been sort of experimenting a little bit, with a vendor that's down on town property under the bridge. It's Muster Dogs, and they asked if they could go on town property, which is right near Connecticut Pharmaceutical and DRS, is that right? Disaster Restoration Services, as well as some of the other companies down there. And I said, let's give it a try for a month. So they're there for the month of July, they tell me they get a few customers every day, they're there only Monday through Friday, and sometimes Tuesday through Friday. They're interested in maybe setting up electricity, so that they don't have to use a generator with the hours that they're there. And I'm interested to see how well they do there. They are invited, quote-unquote, by the town, and they have a permit to be there. So something we should think about is, if we have, let's say, a brewery in town comes in under our regulations, by special permit, they would have to identify where that food truck would be located, and for the times that they'd be there, and they would have to come into the First Selectman's office and get a permit in order to be there, quote-unquote, legally. I mean, we check on their food license, we make sure that they're abiding by keeping things clean and neat and things of that nature. You know, we could go down and revoke that permit if we had to, from these various places. So I, I don't know if we need to change this ordinance, obviously, we don't have to.
Number one, you're making the bridge, under the bridge smell better, Susan, I just wanted to point that out.
I was just getting that, if we already have, like, Top Dog, or we already have some of these vendors, are we already allowing?
The way I read this, I think Susan's right, I don't think we have to change, if you, you know, read the purpose, and then read the definitions, and stop right there. I don't think we have to change this. I think it's very clear, you would need a site plan showing this, or you would be in violation of your site plan, and I think we have other ways to stop this from occurring. This stops any trucks from sitting on the side of the road, I think we're protected there. The town-owned property is pretty well spelled out.
Ben, if you have Section 11-42 exemptions?
I didn't even go there.
Okay, it's Page CD11-5.
I don't know, I'm stuck on the first two, it says we don't, but where are you going, exemptions?
Exemptions, under Peddlers and Hawkers. So it says exemptions to the vending of any goods sold at or upon the occasion of any public festival or holiday of any kind, under the control of persons, as are in charge of such occasions. And that's how we have always said food trucks were allowed for special events, was because of that exemption.
And that is true. You could have down at the fairgrounds, you can have it because of that, but then we have a definition for public festivals or holidays, and we have a definition for that. This doesn't apply, in my opinion, I don't think we need to change anything. I think, don't get me wrong, we're not giving out food trucks right away here, I do believe your site plan would have to show that, and then we'd have more teeth to make sure they're being regulated properly.
And because it's special permit, then Planning and Zoning Commission has a lot of leeway to dictate, down to the point of where their dumpster and their trashcans have to be, where they can park cars, how far away from that vendor they have to have their parking.
Yes, essentially everything, but as of the way, I don't know, Susan, you know, Susan?
I'd like the Selectmen to take a look at it, and we'll put it on the agenda again.
Yeah, I want to read it, cover it, cover it. I'll see if my conclusion changes, but you go to the first two, that's usually where you win or lose a battle, is in the purpose and the definitions.
The other thing is, you know, we're trying to encourage new kinds of businesses to come in and make it, make it appropriate for them. And I think in terms of issues, if issues arise, then you can always deal with them by changing your rules, or by amending them, and meeting the needs that are presented. To try to imagine what's going to happen can sometimes be inefficient and be harmful to the encouragement of new businesses. So with that in mind, I'd really like everybody here to take a look at this again, maybe talk to some of your colleagues in other towns, and see how they manage it. We don't have an overabundance of breweries in our town, in fact, we have none right now. So we're trying to attract some, and we don't have an overabundance of food vendors, or those knocking on our door. I mean, we have one on town property, and we have one on state property.
And we probably have to look into things like, obviously, personal property tax, because we, if they were random trucks, we're not going to get that, but we could, they are going to need to, at some point, be inspected by the Health Department, and maybe there needs to be a certain fee.
Wouldn't they have to, yeah, have the town license, wouldn't we just, like, your restaurants have to do, and they get inspected?
But, you know, I'm with Susan, I think you have to promote business, and it sounds like multiple breweries are telling you the same thing, but obviously, that's what they need, and I don't think it's a bad thing, as long as it's done appropriately and through zoning, and they hopefully get it right, without their eyes pressed.
We also issue permits for special occasions, like the concert series down at the park, so Shiny Do Right has a permit to be there. I've chosen to only issue one at a time. There's an ice cream truck, but that's not for cost, that's a different situation. But, so, the control is really the issuance of permits from, from the Office of the First Selectmen, and then, of course, every food truck has to be licensed by Chatham Health District. So the permitting process includes making certain that they have all the requirements for Chatham Health, and I believe, as part of your permit for Chatham Health, you're then inspected by them so many times a year, whether it's two, three, four times a year.
Under the Chatham Health permit, they're allowed to be in any town in the Chatham Health District. So a lot of the food trucks that would come are also doing, there's a brewery in East Hampton, they're already doing other breweries, so they're already licensed and inspected by Chatham Health. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a lot of extra work for them, because they're already licensing them and inspecting them in other communities, and they would just come here on different days.
Lou? I had a question about the trend. I noticed that there's, I've been to a brewery in Southington, we have a winery here in Portland, there's a winery in Colchester that is going to, and one in Wallingford. It seems that they do not have food trucks there, and is this now a new trend that breweries are saying, that most of these people bring food in, from whatever they, you know, they bring?
So I'm going to make a really sexist comment for a minute. Wineries tend to attract more women and couples, breweries tend to attract more men. Men eat more than women. And so wineries tend to be more like wine and cheese and hors d'oeuvre type food, where beer tends to be more of a meal. And so that's where the difference seems to be.
So maybe I shouldn't mention the wineries at all, the question should be different. It should be, are breweries, in general, moving to this trend of having trucks at their locations?
It is, I wouldn't even call it a trend, it's a business model for a lot of them.
So it's happening?
Yes.
Yes, oh yeah.
It's happening a lot.
Oh yeah.
Lou, I think there's something in the amount they can serve, they need to have food, there's more to this, it's not just, hey, by the way, we want to, I think they need, right.
A tasting room, yes, a tasting room is a two-ounce pour, and that's all they can do. If they want to serve full beer, there's other regulations involved. And so then the other thing that happens is, a commercial, a good commercial kitchen, even for something simple, is anywhere from a $150,000 to a $400,000 investment. So you add that to the cost of your equipment, and then you have to have staff to man that, and breweries are busy only certain hours during the week. Food trucks solve that problem. It allows you to change your food model based on the type of beer that you brew, so if you brew a fall brew, you can match your food to what you're making. It eliminates the cost of hiring and finding good staff that's willing to work essentially part-time. And then it also eliminates that expense of having to manage the kitchen, as well as managing that manufacturing end through the State Liquor Control Authority.
Well, I think, you know, this past weekend, we actually went down to a brewery in Norwich, and they had, they had food, and it was very good. I mean, I think it's just...
Did they have it in the food truck, or inside the brewery?
No, it was inside.
Okay, so they, did they have a grill, or were they, a kitchen, or, you don't know?
Yeah, the kitchen.
So, Leybrant, which...
That was their, you know, obviously, you have to make that choice, because the food truck might be a cheaper...
And a lot of them come down to location, if you find an old restaurant location with an existing kitchen, it's very easy to do that. If you're going into an industrial zone, you have to be able to fit that kitchen in with the existing business that you're sharing space with. I was mentioning Leybrant is up in Manchester, it's not far from Wickham Park, and I was up there two weekends ago. They have food trucks outside, they have an area next to their parking lot, they have a little jog, and that's where they go, and they tend to have two at a time, and you can bring in your own food, or you can buy your food from the food truck there, but those food trucks do change seasonally, so it changes the cuisine, and, and the food trucks are themselves an attraction, if people like a certain type of food, then they're going to go for that food truck as well as for the beer.
Once again, the only issues I see would be through planning and zoning, as far as, you know, if you are attracting other people, traffic, parking, all of those things can be considered by planning and zoning, and I think the fact of the matter is, we do want more uses in our industrial zone, this will promote that, hopefully become the biggest brewery in, in New England, that's great, hopefully you fill up all the manufacturing space in the meantime, yeah, we've got to have a tasting room and...
There's a man with imagination.
I don't see, I don't, I want to read this, but I don't see the...
I think our conversation goes full circle, because that comes back to the apartments at Brainerd Place and the lifestyle that people are looking for. And so if you have a brewery right on the other side of your apartment complex, it becomes a great place to gather. And so it really, you know, I think we've been behind the times in following what the younger generation really wants to have in their community as an amenity for them.
When you look at what we just talked about, how we're, obviously, everybody's growing older every minute of every day, but it all depends on how many minutes you have under the hood, you know?
And Susan knows this from the past, in the past, I did have negotiations with a brewery, I have no negotiations with a brewery, all my spaces are full, but I think...
I can't say...
And that did fall through, and they went to Rocky Hill, good for them.
The places that are looking are not looking at any of Ben's properties, so...
Yeah, but I think this is good for Portland.
Do you have any comments? We have a couple people in the audience, and I'll open it up.
Well, thank you for that. My name's Dave Piper, probably all of you recognize my face, I'm a long-term resident of, I moved here back in June of this year.
You may want to give your name again, Sharon.
Dave Piper, D-E-N-I-C-H-E-R-T. Can you look at a mic, Dave, please?
Oh, sure, thank you. I swear you'll be on camera, too.
Oh boy, that's great. My 15 minutes of fame. Yeah, so not only, I bet big on Portland being the home for my next business, but I do appreciate all the work, Mary covers a lot of ground, so it's easy to follow her. And she's correct, I mean, if we were, if we were experts in the food business, we'd be in the food business, and we'd buy our liquor and beer. We're, you know, we're looking to open the brewery, and food as being compatible with alcohol. We need to provide that some way, we could have snack foods, we would have, food trucks are an important element, having the menus for the local restaurants available, another piece of that. That said, food trucks, as Mary was mentioning, have come a long ways in the, you know, in the last several years, I mean, you've got, and followings. I was looking on Instagram earlier, just for some statistical information here, Mamas, what is it, Mamos Falafel, whatever it's, yeah, it's easy for me to say, has 7,200 or 300 followers on Instagram, a New Jersey, new Haven-based food truck. One called a Craft Bird, a Hartford-based truck, has over 5,500 Instagram followers. So they follow the trucks around, they have a, you know, a following, a great reputation, some gourmet, there's dessert trucks, there's donut trucks, there's, you name it, there's a truck, you know, every cuisine you could think of. So... So, so some of the concerns I think that you'll see in the things that Mary had put together, you know, trash, bathrooms, parking, all those things. I mean, look at it this way, from a very simple, plain way of looking at it. The brewery is the bricks and mortar restaurant. It's just that our food is a roving, roving kitchen with changing cuisine. It's, you know, tax-paying, it's got the bathrooms, it's got the trash, the part, everything as I mentioned. I would, planning and zoning next week is taking up adding brewery language for both farm breweries as well as a manufacturing brewery slash brew pub. I would, a couple of examples that are in your package, Madison and Westbrook is the last page, the Westbrook Ice Cream, Ice Cream Truck Regulation. I don't know, I'm not aware of either of those two towns having a brewery, but there are other coastal towns that do. There's three, if not four, in Branford and all have food trucks. I say all, I'm not sure about DuVig, but more than likely they do as well. So, so there are other places to be looking. New Britain Brewery there had food truck tonight. It was a Wednesday night. They have food truck right through Sunday. Different cuisine, different truck. So with that in mind, to make it, to have the regulation, every food truck is licensed with, they have to license, so there's a, there's a financial commitment for each health district. So they have to pay, and it's, and I think it's very expensive myself. If you only, if you only have one day there, it's like a hundred bucks or something. So it's a lot of, you know, base cost for who knows what kind of, you know, the weather's going to do or what's going to happen. Or you can do like a annualized thing, which is a larger number, but you cover the whole district for whatever that is, quarter, year, whatever. And they inspect, the same inspections required with, with any other restaurant timeframe and stuff like that. I, I think the couple of takeaways, I would say with Madison, think of Madison and Westport, it probably, the good thing is they actually allow them. That's kind of interesting, I thought, when I saw the, those two examples. So my suggestion would be to keep it as simple as possible. Don't make it a big paperwork thing for, because we don't know what truck's going to, you know, if there's going to be replacement trucks, there's going to be a truck that can't show up, they break down, they, you know, whatever. So we can't know that it's going to be the Bears Smokehouse Food Truck on, you know, January seventh, blah, 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 whatever. If you make it as easy as possible for us, we'll do, buy a special permit. We're going to be mandated to keep our act together and we're not going to, you know, allow one small piece of our business, which is a vendor who may show up once, two, three, four times a year to, to cause any grief for our special permit. So keep it wide as possible, easy as possible for us to work with. And I think it can be a, an opportunity because you're going to bring in, those people have the following, you're going to bring in new people to the town. Where's Portland? Just as the brewery or any, or any business like it would do is bring someone new into town that hasn't been there already. So I don't know if you have any other questions for me, but that's really my comments and I do appreciate your time and we do hope, this is a big hurdle. If, and I don't know, I think you folks may have the opportunity to have a truck already. It seemed to me from my discussions that it was, they're, they're restricted and it's that you're given that opportunity from time to time to do it. So, and I don't, I haven't read the whole thing personally, but, but keep it as easy as possible for us and we can make that work for everybody.
Well, welcome to Portland.
Well, thank you.
Welcome.
Nice to have you both. Thank you.
Any questions?
I just have a question. Do you, do you ever see like if the brewery is successful, do you see them, some of these smaller breweries that are having food trucks eventually evolving into pubs like, like what happens, what occurred in Harpoon in Windsor, Vermont, where it's like, you know, now it's kind of like a brewery with tours, it's an attraction and then a full-blown restaurant and place is packed.
Yeah, well, there's, absolutely. It's, it's a, it's not a, obviously not a brand-new industry. It's, it's taken off since 2012 in Connecticut alone. It's the reason for it's taken off, some laws have changed and made it more easily profitable or economically feasible to spend, you know, half million to a million dollars to put together a brewery because you can sell directly to folks onsite, which is where, over the, over that bar is where the most of the money is going to be made. When you hand out samples and hoping that they take off with a twelve-dollar half gallon full, but they don't, they're not obligated to. Well, that, that change has allowed us to go from maybe a dozen breweries, fifteen breweries, to nearly one hundred today in Connecticut. Some communities like, like I said, Branford, I know has three. I think I've heard there's going to be one more coming along. A second one just opened in Bristol last week. Lasting very, last month or this, this.
Now, can you also bottle it up, can it and sell it? Like when you go into some of the package stores and they have the brews from some of these local breweries, I remember buying one from one of those breweries in Branford. I forgot the name.
Sure.
You know, where they pack the four cans in a little.
Yeah, it's, the license that we would expect to get is really, you're a manufacturer with the opportunity to sell as a brew pub as well. So it's a full liquor license. So you're able to package it and distribute it, whether you distribute it up by yourself or through a distributor relationship.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was asking. Thank you.
When you say full liquor license, you still mean just beer, right? Onsite?
Uh, nope. Full liquor license. But that's not, our, our idea has always been, I mean, we may have a bourbon night once in a while, but, and it depends on the market. If the market changes and it's needed to keep, requirement in the state is fifty, five thousand gallons is produced a year. Our intention would be to have potentially local wine, local cider, a cidery right across the river, Middletown in, in our beer and potentially others. Guest taps and maybe even, you know, some brewing for other smaller entities that can't keep up with their own capacity.
Would you, would you use Portland water?
Yes. Yeah, that would be the only.
We can use water.
Easiest source.
Water, yeah. We have very good water, Steve.
Thank you.
We just did an analysis of it recently, so yes, we saw.
Very interesting.
Well, don't give up. Keep up, keep good work.
Thank you. We appreciate your time and consideration and making this, the food truck regulation is really, kind of goes hand-in-hand with, with our particular business model.
Just, just so we're clear, I'm not, I'd never imply we were misinterpreting it in the past. I'm just saying we may be interpreting it differently in the future. I just want to.
And actually, Ben, in terms of. But in, in terms of right now, it's not unlike what you're asking or discussing. It's very similar to what we're doing now because we do issue permits on town property. We've avoided issuing permits per se unless it's a private party, which again, if you're going to interpret as the Board of Selectmen that this is an individual private property, which businesses, inviting a food truck to be there. So, you know, that's what you need to think about. We're not talking about roving bands where the, the food truck is going to rove and one day it's going to be on Airline Avenue and another day it's going to be on Pickering Street, another day it's going to be on Main Street. We're talking about a specific permit to be at a specific place for a specific cost over the course of a year, let's say.
Planning and zoning will weigh in, you know, well said. Planning and zoning will weigh in and possible screening that's, you know, there's going to be, you know, whatever they require, they're going to require. So I'm, I'm kind of happy that they'll get it right.
Yeah, I think I've, to the selectwoman's point, I think that I've heard the term host, host business, use that type of thought and terminology and that makes kind of sense. We would be the host. Again, they wouldn't be roving around, they would be, they're coming to visit us.
That's not to say that that truck owner couldn't get a permit in, in another location within our community. And, you know, they're licensed by Chatham Health District, so they could be in Portland one day with a permit that covers them and they could be in Marlboro another day or in Colchester another day. But they would all, those towns deal with their regulations and we would deal with ours. You know, in, in terms of ordinances, it's best if you can keep stuff simple because people understand them better. And I think that in terms of issuing permits, it's incumbent upon the entity giving the permit that it's done with appropriate restrictions and oversight.
As long as you don't put too much language in it like he said.
No, I'm, I'm saying if you leave it the way it is, but, but we're judicious and careful, which I think we are now.
Yeah, I agree.
Because I have issued permits from my office for, as I said, Shiny Do Right, Nora's Cupcake has a permit to operate in Portland and Mustard Dogs has a permit to operate at certain locations in Portland. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on in our agenda. The next item is refunds of excess payments. Who would like to do them?
All right, I make a motion that we refund the amount of forty-three dollars and twenty-five cents to Donovan M. Lapointe.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, motion carries?
I make a motion that we refund both of the following amounts, ninety-two dollars and forty-seven cents and two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and twenty-two cents to Wheels LT.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries?
I make the motion that we refund the following amounts, sixteen dollars and ninety-one cents and then another of sixteen dollar and ninety-one cents to Marilyn, I want to say Mecklenster.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries?
And then I make finally here, a motion to refund the following four amounts of seven-hundred-and-seventy dollars and thirty-six cents, two-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and forty-two cents, two-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents and one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents to Toyota Lease Trust.
Second.
Second by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries? Status and committee reports? Are there any reports tonight?
Yeah, I'll give an update on the park. I can't remember what I last said, but, you know, what we talked about today, we had a meeting today out at the park and they have now installed all of the tanks that are related to the splash pad. And they are planning to probably dig the foundation, dig to start the foundations for the buildings. We also talked about putting on the first layer of the material for all of the paving and they hoped that, they talked about trying to get to that within the next month is when they'd like to put down that first layer.
There's a hold on the second layer, is there?
A hold? No, a hold on the second layer, yeah.
Yeah, hold, yeah, yeah.
Usually an inch and a half, inch and a half.
Yep.
Yeah, that's scheduled to be at the end.
What about around the walking trail?
That's going to have to be, the park committee did not have a quorum. That's really neat, they need to have everyone there so they could actually have a conversation about that.
And I think that selectmen should, just to make sure we're, we're aware of stuff.
And just for sake of understanding the impact, not, if the decision was made not to pave around the soccer fields on the walking path, that would save ten thousand eight hundred dollars, I believe is the number that they estimate.
If you don't pave it, how would you, how would you leave the surface?
Probably that stone dust you would see on other trails.
How much of the parking lot do we have to give up? I think we need the walking trail. I'd rather see some parking stalls given up in the back. I think it's important to have the walking trail, but that's just me. We'll see.
What, what do you mean, Ben? I don't understand what you mean.
I think it's important to have a paved walking trail. That's what we said we were going to do from the beginning. I think.
We're not saying we don't have money. I'm, I'm trying to be a little stingy, actually. Look at saving money and maybe spend, I'm not saying that you never would do it, but I'm just trying to save as much money as we can because there's always something that seems to pop up that you need to do. And, and if you could hold off on that and then do that at the tail end, it just gives you, me, a little more of a cushion in my mind. But I'm not saying not ever do it. I'm just saying if we can hold off and save some money, it might be something for consideration.
But I think from a functionality standpoint, you're better off giving up a portion of the parking lot, ten thousand bucks worth, because then we can still use this for strollers, ADA.
I see.
I think it's very important with the older community and with the young mothers and fathers that choose to run with a stroller, to pave for ten grand. Pay that, give up ten grand of parking lot in the back. We're not plowing it. We don't plan on plowing it. We can do exactly what you said. We're not giving up on it for now. Pick a ten thousand dollar section. Whatever that square footage is, that's what it is. We throw millings down for now and we call it a day. You bring up the grade with the millings and then you take it back out when you're ready to pave.
So the only thing I will tell you what the guards said, Adam, is we've had two meetings in a row, unfortunately, where they didn't have a quorum, but we had different group, different individuals at those meetings. And the general discussion about not paving part of the lots has never really been on the table.
Well, somebody needs to voice exactly what I just said and if somebody has a good reason to not agree with what I just said, so be it. But you still would have parking for people that need pavement. You would still then have a walking trail for people that need pavement. The other scenario, you do not have that, so I just think for ten thousand dollars, give up part of the parking lot. If, if we don't have the money. We're not even saying.
We don't know.
This is all. That's what I would do, but.
No, we have the money. It's just a matter of trying to save a little bit.
Yep.
You know, that's always right.
Sorry if I rise in a little.
And I concur with that and I think that maybe, now if you could share that with the committee, the possibility of a portion of that parking lot not being paved now could possibly be paved by the town the year or two later. So we have the equipment within the Public Works Department. They probably could do that a year out rather than not paving the, the trail.
Right.
I mean, if you're going to pave part of the trail, you might as well pave all the trail.
Right. And it's ten thousand.
Right.
It's, I think for, there's a lot of voters and a lot of people that that ten thousand is going to go a long way and is very important. I don't, I, maybe I'm, somebody, please come up with some, give up part of the parking lot that the whole thing does not need to be paved unless somebody comes up with a great argument, what am I missing here? This is a no-brainer.
And I have heard the ADA matter.
Yeah, the ADA, you clearly are not going to be ADA on that part if you don't.
Without.
And right, and in all fairness, a lot of our parking lot is not ADA.
No, I'm talking about the walk.
Talking about the walking trail.
Oh, no, I think.
Somebody with a stroller.
The wall is not ADA unless you pave it all.
I don't even think this is, should even be, I mean, I don't even think that should be considered for the ten thousand dollars out of a six million dollar park. I think it's foolish. I think we should definitely give up part of our paving if we are down to those kind of crunches. I don't think that, I don't know.
We're not at those crunches.
But if you were, just give up part of the parking lot. Who cares?
I, I just know in managing projects, if you can have a cushion toward the end, by that I mean some dollars that are allocated but not necessarily expended, it, it helps because, because you just don't know, there might be something that comes up when we're tweaking things toward the end. So, you know, that, that's management of a project more than saying, I don't want to have it done, but rather how can we have confidence that not only the contingency that we have, but maybe a little bit more. So it's just a conservative approach that I like to take.
And if you want to do that, I would say just pave going in straight all the way to the concession stands and give up all the other pavement except the walking trail would still be more appropriate than giving up the.
So again, when you do that, that whole thing has been graded to a certain pitch, a certain, certain grade. I don't know. I mean, I know they throw those numbers about paving, but I can't see, you're going to have to come up with a solution if you were to re- put different types of material there in order to try to cover the same thing.
It may not be possible though. It may not be possible though. It's just something I'd like the committee to consideration. Lou, you had something you were gonna say.
No, I just wanna concur with what Ben was saying. If it's possible to, I mean, to pave part of the lot, your trail still will be ADA if you do the whole trail. So that, that's an important part, I think, that you guys have been talking about all the time. But as far as, you know, being careful down the road, you know, trying to find a few extra dollars for something that may be unforeseen. And we've had a few cases where things were unforeseen and we had to, you know, pay for those. If in fact, we would have to do that again, we need that cushion of ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, I'm not sure what the case would be. So I'm not sure what you're, what you would be asking us to do.
Again, the committee makes, it's gonna vote on it.
Some of the board members have said that it would be a good thing to do. Could that be transmitted to the committee?
That's what I'd like, could some, could somebody relay that, you know, as clear as I just said, and you could say Ben's upset about it, I don't, I'm fine.
We have a committee that's doing a good job.
Right, don't worry, I was taking.
Do we need to give them our guidance?
Why don't you make it a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to, to the park committee, the commission, parks and rec commission and committee of the park, to most likely, potentially decrease the cost of the project by around ten to fifteen thousand dollars by looking into the reduction of parking pavement.
Versus, versus walking trail.
Versus the walking trail, okay.
And then maybe get back to us with their thoughts?
Sure, yeah, 'cause they may be, they may have something I'm not thinking of, in all fairness, but I don't see.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second, second by Ben, discussion?
Okay, and there may be some issues where the pavement or the grading could be stone dust or it could be just what it is. If that's the case, then so be it for now, as long as the project comes in within budget.
Is your, is your motion to direct them to look at saving it or to ask them to evaluate to try to save that amount, to basically do, investigate what the impacts would be and then to report back?
I think both, I think both, we'd like to have them.
No, I mean, yeah.
I would be in favor of evaluating, I'm not in favor of directing until we've got an evaluation done. I don't wanna direct them to save anything until we've stayed the impacts.
Well, we can do one thing at a time.
Right, sure, yeah, I think that.
So I.
Sharon, Sharon, it's all.
So I make a motion for the Park and Rec Committee, Route seventeen Park Committee, to evaluate the reduction of ten thousand dollars from the parking lot and get back to the Board of Direct, Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, and then we'll basically know how big of an area that is, whether we then have to put millings in to bring those drains up to a grade. Hopefully we'll pick an area that number one doesn't have ADA, and number two has the least amount of drainage, so you would start, it might be just the backside, so it could be seventeen stalls in a row, and then we're not having to mess with the drains, and then we just, we just add millings that won't spot.
And I think maybe I missed something there, is that in exchange for the paving of the.
In lieu of, right, in lieu of, in lieu of.
The paving of the trail, in lieu of the trail.
In lieu of not paving.
In lieu of.
No, no.
In lieu of.
You want us to evaluate the parking lot instead of listening to not paving it.
Instead of, right.
In lieu of.
This is great. Let's throw a couple more sentences in there.
We'll get it, Sharon, don't worry.
I don't think we're there yet. Do I say it again, Lou?
Well, hang on, she, you wanna read it back to us to see?
I think we know what we're trying to say. Put it in.
We've said it in pieces.
Can you read back what you have?
Right.
Do you want me to?
Uh, second.
He's making a motion for the Parks and Rec Committee on Route seventeen Park to evaluate reduction of ten thousand dollars from the parking lot and get back to the Board of Selectmen in exchange, or instead of, that's, that's it.
Instead of the elimination of paving around the walking paths surrounding the soccer field. And I say it's not to the Park and Rec.
Elimination, elimination of paving around the soccer fields?
Yeah, in lieu of eliminating the paved path around the, or eliminating the paving on the path around the soccer fields.
Yes.
And I say the only other correct, which is I think I stated it, is it's not to the Park and Rec Commission, it's to the Route seventeen Park Building Committee.
Yeah. That way we understand what.
You seconding that motion, Ben?
I did, yes.
Further discussion? So it's an evaluation, I guess?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Because I think I'm hearing consensus that you want the paving around the soccer field to meet ADA compliance and, and consumers' use.
Right, unless something, you know, really different comes up, I don't see the, for the ten thousand.
Obviously they'll tell us.
Yes, and they, they made of something I don't, so.
Well, the grading, the grade of the parking lot with the drains already in.
Yeah, but you just pick, you pick the section, if the back section has the drains on the low side, and it all pitches to the low side, then you just give up the pavement on the high side. There's a way to do it, you know that, you've got tons of parking.
Any other discussion on this motion that's been made and seconded? If not, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, and thank you Ralph for a very good report, and it sounds like we're on schedule for an opening in November, in October?
Well, that could be.
Depending on the weather.
Little hesitation there.
It was like, whoa.
I guess we talked about today, they're worried about Strickland Street being completed, 'cause we have to get Eversource in there and they're still waiting to hear back from Eversource.
I don't know why, but Eversource has been very slow. I'd suggest they contact my office and I'll get in touch with Pat Vance, who are liaison. She's fabulous as far as trying to get stuff done, but if I don't tell her, nothing gets done. So if you could, you know, they need to contact me.
Well, I think Adam is out for next week, I think he's the person that's been going. I'll make sure that Adam is aware that he should reach out.
Anybody, I mean, if you wanna tell me to call.
I do, I'll tell you. I just, I just heard from Ralph.
You could tell.
He didn't make a phone call.
I'll call Pat.
We should, and that's something we can, there's one poll that has to get moved because of the location of how Strickland's being reconfigured.
Yeah, they can't, they can't actually pave that area on Strickland, I think.
Well, and I know about these delays, Ralph, because we've experienced it with some of the sidewalk projects and some of the streets, they've had difficulty getting Eversource to respond, so we need to sometimes make multiple phone calls and work on that. Any other reports tonight?
The only thing I would suggest is, I know I couldn't make the meeting 'cause of work, but Dave, I know you guys met this week. Did you have a conversation about when you wanna come to us, or did you already pass it on?
I sent an email today, I don't think I got a chance to read it.
No, I did not, I'll read it.
Oh, they don't.
They don't, okay, the second meeting, and I'm, okay.
Are we talking dog park now?
Yeah.
Sorry, yes, I should have qualified the dog park.
I think it's twenty-one of August?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So just so people understand, so obviously we tasked them with evaluating sites, looking at the pros and cons of those sites, and look at some of the expenses associated with building it, and then come back and report to us. So they've been working diligently on their slides and their, I mean, their boards, so that's their opportunity to come and speak.
And I'll put you on the twenty. Thank you. All a comment?
I just had one quick thing I couldn't say earlier, I don't know if I could have said it.
Sure, go ahead.
Just to share with what you were saying about the education population.
Yes.
I did a ten-year analysis for the Board of Education, school population or student population, and it's a trend line that goes just like that. We've lost about twelve percent, about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and fifty kids. We supplemented it with like fifty open choice, but it's definitely, seeing with no housing available, we definitely save the same thing.
And it's a, it's a serious concern, Dave. It is something that I think we really need to look at, and it's, I think it is directly related to the affordability of finding a place to live in, in our town. And things have, things have changed, we need to address it.
And it's generational. It, this generation now that is, would be having kids can afford to have three or four, so they're having one. And so we're seeing smaller family units and we're seeing fewer families.
Right, the second thing is my in-laws live in Brandy Park. I can't tell you how many people ask me, is there availability there? Want to get in there, so we need somebody to come in and build another Brandy Park.
And assisted living, I don't know if you get that too, people would like to be in a facility that maybe starts out as an apartment, but has the opportunity, some people have a covenant village in Cromwell because of that. They start out in their own apartment and maybe they on occasion need extra help and they go back, or eventually they need assisted living. So that is something I know Mary's department works on, and it's not easy finding the proper location. Good feedback, thank you. Informal discussion by the Board of Selectmen? Uh, yes?
I met with several members of the Airline Trail Committee today to talk about the census. The census is a project through DEEP and also the University of Connecticut. So they've selected the Airline Trail in Portland to be one of the census takers for their research project at the University of Connecticut. And in doing so, the possibility of getting grants increases and improves our chances of getting grants by working with the University of Connecticut and working with DEEP. So we have now, or we are now in the process of putting together a site plan for the extension of the trail. And with that, in, with that said, we would probably need some funding to continue the trail. So the, the site plan, the census, and then requesting of the grant from DEEP would sit well with them if we were to do the survey. The census committee members that worked, were there today were Chantel Foster and Kathy Heron and Gary Yo. Now Gary is not on our committee, but I saw him at the concert the other night, and he said, what can I do to help and volunteer for the Airline Trail? So now he is a census taker, official census taker with a jacket and a clipboard. So he's, he's ready to go. And we had a tree down on the trail that extended the whole length of, the width of the trail. And one of our esteemed selectmen, Rick Sharpe.
Oh, wow.
Took his chainsaw.
Thank you, Rick.
And chopped it up, removed it from the trail, and the trail is now safe again for everybody to use, even vipers. So a very sincere thank you to Rick Sharpe.
Thank you, Rick, good job.
Got all your ones too, and that's it.
Yeah, still have all my fingers.
That's very important.
Yes.
I had a couple of things I wanted to let you know about. I sent you, Selectmen, a copy of the response from the Department of Transportation. I just got it, I think, late yesterday or early today, in regard to FIG construction. So review that. I also sent it to the press, so it should be in the newspaper. If anybody wants a copy of it, let me know, I'll send it. Christie Carfino shared it with me. Norm Needleman wants to come to our next meeting on August seventh, I believe. And what he would like to do is give an update on what happened in the legislative arena. So I'd be happy to have him come. Christie has done that, I think, already. Cause I went and did a, not too many people came, but she did a tour of the Capitol. And while she did the tour, she gave an update on some of the pertinent legislation. It was really good. I'm sorry more people weren't able to attend. If she offers that again, I'd highly encourage people to go for the tour. And also, good perspective on what kinds of legislation was proposed and what actually got accomplished. That was a good session, and I hope that Norm will be able to give us his perspective from the Senate. Been working with Spencer Cabral and Kathy Heron in terms of some signs, some modest signs that we're thinking maybe a picture of either people that volunteer, he's gonna put out a little question on Facebook and see if you'd like to be part of our back-to-school campaign to slow down the speeders. And a couple of the signs we'll put near the schools, and it'll say, you know, back to school, drive like your life depends on it, because it does. And then some other more generic signs that just say, please slow down with a picture of somebody. So if anybody wants to volunteer to have the picture on a sign, or we even thought maybe somebody walking with a service dog or something might be kind of a clever idea that catches people's attention. And then Bob Shea will be installing those digital speed signs on High Street and Ames Hollow. We're also looking at narrowing the lanes on High Street, so they'll be sort of what they call bicycle lanes, those white lines along the sides of the road that encourage you to slow down because the road doesn't look as wide open. So if your lane is a little narrower, it naturally causes the driver to slow down. And then we'll follow that up with maybe some signage on some of the roads that says, slow down, speed limit twenty-five miles per hour. We may do that Middle Hattam Road, there's an awful lot of speeding out there, and Ames Hollow. So those are some of the initiatives that that group is doing with Public Works. And hopefully, when we do another census and look at the speeds on Ames Hollow, on High Street, on Free Stone Avenue, we'll see that, fingers crossed, people are slowing down and saving, saving lives. Few other things, I just wanted to remind the Selectmen and employees and members of boards and commissions that Connecticut Conference of Municipalities runs this Connecticut Certified Municipal Official Program. It's a program that I know that some of you have expressed interest in, it's on the CCM website. They run some excellent, excellent workshops. And these workshops are anywhere from Understanding Freedom of Information Act to Understanding Economic Development, to Grant Writing, and then any number of other, other sessions. They're held throughout the state of Connecticut, typically at other town halls. So you get to talk to other people, you get to view other town halls and learn a little bit about what they're doing. I'm happy to say that I've, I've taken the classes. There is a fee associated, which I paid out of my own pocket, I think it's a hundred and fifty dollars or something like that, to take thirty credits of classes. Each course is typically three credits, and you can also do some online work through KIRMA for some safety education. And I've achieved all of the credits in the different categories. So in November, they'll have their annual meeting, I hope more of you can attend. Some of you went to the annual CCM meeting last year. It takes, really takes you two years to get these classes under your belt because it's difficult to schedule with people's working. They're usually nine to twelve. Once in a while, they have some at night. So I encourage you to go visit the website and look at CCMO. It's in cooperation with Trinity College. Trinity College does have a public policy master's program, as well as an undergraduate program in government, I believe. So it is, it is high-quality programming. I even went to one on drones, which was really interesting. And how you really gotta be pretty, pretty well-trained to operate these drones, particularly the ones that go above three hundred feet?
Above four hundred, and especially Global Kraus, which is the other, the other FAA license.
Now, that was, but the Town of Vernon Police did an excellent workshop with them. So keep that in mind, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
One second.
Yes.
On that, on that bridge.
The bridge, yes.
Was it in their specs to secure a place to park the equipment, or are we gonna be losing their, well, we leased the land from them, so they can't have it. Where do they park all the equipment? How's that, I'll start with that.
Probably Ben, what, like they did last time, they simply with a stroke of a pen, they eliminate our lease.
That's what I.
And that's where they're probably gonna park.
That's what I.
They're starting in the spring of 2020. All more reason for us to work on making.
All the bridge, yeah. Trucks and stuff, they keep equipment?
Yeah, right now, particularly for some of our businesses under the bridge, and we hope they're expanding. I mentioned Standard NAP, I know Connecticut Pharmaceutical is looking for more space. And Mary keeps me informed on some of the other industrial endeavors, as well as Brownstone Exploration Discovery Park, with their, lots of people that come in July and August. They park under the Aragoni Bridge, and we have a lease with the State of Connecticut. They don't charge us any money, but they allow us to use it as long as they don't need it. But when they bring all their trucks in there to do under the bridge, they're gonna need that. So they'll probably send me a nice little letter and say, sorry, can't have it anymore. All more reason for us to plan ahead in terms of our planning, and as Mary pointed out, and I think that was, it's critical to contemplate, should that occur, there's still gonna be a need for parking. And if we own that land in between the time of full development, the charging of parking could become a way for revenue to come into the town coffers.
I have a question on the, the land squab.
Yes.
Have.
I haven't heard anything.
I saw, I saw.
I saw, I saw Jim Hill today. And he said, they're working on it.
Okay.
It, it's a, it's between the George Hall, George Law and the surveyor. But it's, it's still in the works, but they're busy, yeah.
All right, good.
It's still coming.
'Cause I haven't seen him in exchange clubs, kinda shut down for the summer, so.
I just happened to see at the library yesterday.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Want to change a motion to adjourn? Seconded by Lou, seconded by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Motion adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Mary, a lot of interesting things and interesting observa-